Here we are, 7:30, it's Thursday, July 27th, 2017. This is the Situate Planning Board meeting. We have an agenda that's been posted. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, first on our agenda tonight is in a public hearing, accessory dwelling special permit for Two Cedar Crest Lane. Who's here to represent that?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Gregory Morris. I'm a registered engineer representing the property owner Karen Lynch. This is a special permit request for construction of a detached accessory dwelling at Two Cedar Crest Lane. In accordance with Section 530 of the bylaw, we made the applicable submittals, including a site plan that I've mounted on the poster board depicting the property, floor plans of the proposed residence, and the statements that Ms. Lynch will be occupying the premises. The site itself is a non-conforming lot. We went before the zoning board of appeals last week. It's non-conforming with respect to lot area. It's in the R2 zoning district. This lot is 17,175 square feet. We did receive unanimous approval by the zoning board of appeals for construction of the accessory dwelling, allowing the increase in the floor area of more than 20 percent.
Is that in here?
It was just received last week.
The city has filed with the town clerk yet.
Okay.
The accessory dwelling, in accordance with the bylaw, complies with the setback. It's proposed greater than 15 feet from the side yard, greater than 30 feet from the front yard. This is a corner lot having frontage on both Torrey's Lane and Cedar Crest Lane. The floor area proposed is 748 square feet. In the package where the floor plans, it documents that there is a two means of access and egress out, one being the front through the garage, which is the lower level, and out the back through a slider off of the living area. I'd turn it over for any questions.
Laura.
It's a fairly straightforward, separate accessory dwelling built above what's going to be a new garage. I think what's to be noted about this application is it's somewhat like some of the ones that you've had where you've had some concerns about the property looking like there are two houses on the lot. It's a fairly small lot size, and it is an undersized lot. The corner lot lends itself to having two separate driveways, which of course is what you would want if you lived in the house. You'd want all the coming and going from the accessory unit to be separated, but it's I think it leans towards giving the appearance of having two houses on a lot. The only other issue is that the water department has some concerns about the use of water in Torrey's Lane. It's only a two-inch line, and the next person to build who's going to use that line is going to have to pay to upgrade it. So that's why they're okay with this as long as the water comes off of either Cedar Crest or off the existing house.
Or they could upgrade the line.
Or they could upgrade the whole line.
How is it fed now?
The house is getting water off of Cedar Crest, and it must be a different-sized line.
Yeah, the water department submitted correspondence to Laura dated July 20th, saying that it was acceptable for connection from the house to the accessory dwelling through the existing water service. If this was to have a separate service, they wanted upgrade of the line on Torrey's Lane. That is not our proposal. We've proposed to connect it to the existing house.
Okay. Bill, you got questions?
Talk to me about the topography of this land here. I mean, it actually comes back, it comes down as it slopes down.
Sure. The topography, this is generally a hill at the back of this property here. Torrey's Lane, for reference, is the low point at elevation 37.1, where our proposed driveway is connecting to Torrey's Lane. The slab of the new building is at elevation 41 and 1/2, so our driveway is approximately an 8.8 percent grade on the driveway. Right now, it's lawn or field area. It's all upland area. The backyard is the highest point. The backyard is at elevation 50 or 51. So how this property was designed and what's shown on our building elevations is that coming in from Torrey's Lane, it looks like a one-and-a-half-story building. If you look at page A2 of our floor plans, the front elevation depicts what you would see. You would see a one-and-a-half-story structure that's built into the embankment. The second floor of that is dormered in the roof of that garage. That becomes a walkout at that higher level in the backyard.
And that's where the sliders are? You walk outside through the sliders?
You walk out through the sliders into the backyard, correct.
And that's same level?
The backyard is approximately six feet higher than the front.
Why didn't they consider attaching the accessory dwelling to the main house?
I'm not certain why that wasn't considered. Perhaps it was. I think the septic is between the house and Torrey's Lane. We are doing a new septic with this project, though.
I can answer a question.
And who are you?
I'm Johnny Harris, Nine Torrey's Lane.
Are you the proponent here, or?
We've sent in, this is our first meeting we've ever been to.
Okay, so you live in a budding lot?
We live on Nine Torrey's Lane, which is directly across from where the proposed dwelling is going to be constructed.
And we sent some information to Ms. Joseph, and I guess you guys have concerns?
We sent a letter with our concerns and...
I got it now. I'm just trying to get my hands.
Thank you.
You were involved in the design of this?
No, the question was, and if you don't know the end to this, I'll actually end. The question was, why didn't they attach the house, the proposed dwelling, to the existing house? Was that your question?
That's her question.
May I give my opinion?
Assume it's an opinion, you don't know it for a fact.
No, but we're friends with our neighbor Karen Lynch. In fact, we're great with...
Be happy to hear your opinion.
My opinion is that she has had an allergic reaction to what has been in the basement from the former occupant of the house, and she's tried hard to get rid of some of the contaminants that have affected her over a period of time. And because of that, she has told me that she just wanted to make a separate house because of the contaminants in the house. She just can't get used to it, and she, that's why. And if anyone wants to ask her, I would recommend that.
Has she said she's going to live in the primary dwelling or the accessory dwelling?
It's my understanding that she'll be moving into the accessory dwelling.
I think her sister's going to live in the primary residence that's already there.
So go back to that. So with the exception of making this an embankment garage, how much is there much more grading that's going to be done on the lot?
No, the majority of the work is between Torrey's Lane and the garage. That's where we're proposing a new septic system. We'll go between the road and the garage. That's where the driveway is. The remainder of the lot stays as is. We're not doing anything in the back of the lot, per se. We're not doing anything in front of the existing house. I will add, in the back of the, on the back of the accessory dwelling, we are adding a roof drywall system. The amount of impervious coverage here does not trigger your stormwater bylaw, but we have included a roof drywall system being attached to the building and the driveway as we've proposed. It is a pervious paver driveway.
The septic system's going to treat both houses?
Correct.
Where is that located?
The septic system is between Torrey's Lane and the accessory dwelling, located under the proposed driveway.
Where is that shown?
It's shown on the septic design plan, which was approved by the Board of Health as a separate document. I did not submit a copy of that plan, but it is located in front of the accessory dwelling. There's a copy of it.
This is what the Board of Health approved? So you have more than one copy, or?
There's another one.
I just want everybody to be able to see what it's all.
Where's the original? No, the original septic system.
It's depicted on that plan. I think it's... Existing system. There's a tank in the front yard here, and then there's a leaching field on the side.
That's the big mound?
I think that was a natural hill that was there. I don't think that's a mound because of the septic system.
It looks like it was there. It looks like it slopes down pretty good.
I'm sorry, did you say it's in front of the house now, on the Cedar Crest frontage?
It's on the corner.
It's on the corner. The septic tank is in the front on the Cedar Crest Lane side.
And you said the leaching field's under the driveway?
The proposed is, correct. It's proposed under the driveway. It's what they refer to as an H20 loaded system, so it's okay for vehicular vehicles over it. We had very good perk tests out there. Perk tests at five minutes an inch, six minutes an inch. It's a loamy sand, very well drained. Groundwater is deep at the site.
So why, this is going to be for both houses?
Correct. They'll both tie into one new septic system.
Because the other septic system has failed?
Not because the other septic system has failed, but the setbacks from the accessory dwelling to the other septic system, it's hard to comply with the 20-foot setback to it. We're going to have excavation for this project, and installing a new septic system for this, I think the thought process was get the whole system upgraded. You know, it hasn't been upgraded in some period of time. If they're digging and putting in a septic tank, they can do it all for one, you know, at a cost savings, and that's what they've proposed.
So what's groundwater?
The test pits are, since we went down 10 feet without finding groundwater.
I'm a little concerned about what, obviously putting the system underneath the driveway, but...
It's a system that's approved by the Mass DDP. It's been approved by your Board of Health. The septic systems are put under driveways and parking lots all the time.
And you said what, an 8-degree slope going up to the garage?
8.0, correct.
How many bedrooms is the new septic system approved for?
Sure. I'll just look at my copy of the plan here.
For four.
For four, okay.
Yeah.
Designed as a four-bedroom septic system. Three in the existing house and one in the accessory.
Can I ask a question?
Bill? Hold on, please.
I'm all set for a while.
You're all set?
Yep.
The rendition that we have here with the garages, where did it go? All these pieces, okay? So the front of the house is going to have, what, four windows and a little piece on the, would be the left here? And then the garage doors are as depicted, two sets of garage doors?
Correct.
Okay.
That's looking at it from Torrey Lane to the front door.
And so it's just basically, it's a studio apartment?
Essentially, it's a studio apartment above a garage, correct.
Okay. I'm all set for now, thank you.
Who's parking in the garage?
There's two spaces in the garage. They'd be four of this accessory dwelling.
So parking for the primary dwelling is the existing driveway?
Correct. No change.
Okay. I'm okay at this moment. Richard?
Well, I did about a half hour ago drive by and take some pictures. This, where the proposed garage is planning to, or proposed to be, it is the shallowest part of the whole site. The corner where the Torrey's Lane and Cedar Crest, that is really quite steep. So may I ask the neighbors, I mean, do you ever get water on the other side? Like, is it running off that steep, or?
We sent some photographs. Did you see the photographs that we sent? Yeah, we, there's a lot of runoff in our neighborhood because of the lay of the land that comes down off of Cedar Crest, because it is sort of a hill. And the house is at, Karen's house is actually situated on a very small part of the property that's level. The rest of the property is fairly steeply graded, either down to Cedar Crest or down to Torrey's Lane, you know, right in front of our property. And during storms, there's a lot of runoff just from the street, Cedar Crest, that comes down off of her property and other people's property. They are coming down Torrey's Lane. And then also, obviously, the hill that's right across the street from us, so...
There's also been some erosion just from the street that has, year after year, no matter how we build it up, there's, it goes right through what we build up and right into our yard, creating a kind of channel, which is the exact spot where the end of the proposed driveway will be. So we're concerned about the runoff from the driveway, as well as a host of other concerns.
And the roof, and the fact that the structure is going to be, you know, taking up a good part of that land and actually going to be, you know, they're going to be, have to be digging out like a huge part of that hill, and also digging up a lot of the, where the septic system proposes, and that's why I wanted to ask, like, where the land had been perked, because it is up on a hill, and we know it's a lot of glacial till there, and so, you know, there's some good percolation probably at the top of the hill, but down where we are, the soil is much more dense, and there's a lot of clay, and I know that we've had problems with, you know, water collecting in our basement. We've dealt with that problem, so that it now drains off, and we don't get water in our basement anymore. But it, there is a lot of runoff just because of that area where we are, with the surrounding, surrounded by several hills. And I actually think our neighbor, who's not here, that recently bought their house, is going to end up with an even worse situation, because they actually get, you know, I've seen water like several inches deep in their yard on occasion when we've had some serious rain events.
Well, yeah, I think the reason I was asking the question is that, you know, nothing along Cedar Crest, there's no change really to the site, correct, Greg?
On Cedar Crest, no.
Yeah, so there's nothing that would really impact it, per se, negatively? And actually, looking at this, I mean, is it, is, from an engineering point of view, potentially, could it improve the situation? I know you've got more impervious surface, but as you said, you've got that, the drywall system behind.
Yeah.
So that's what I was thinking, is that's going to slope into the house. Could it potentially actually mitigate some of the runoff from that, the current slope right now?
Sure. I mean, right now, you certainly are getting runoff off of that slope onto the street. That's what the pictures show, and I would absolutely agree that's what happens now. We are going to be picking up the roof and diverting that into the drywall system behind. When that overtops, you know, that would run around the garage and out to the street in the same fashion that it does now. The driveway, again, trying to minimize impervious surfaces. We did it as a pervious driveway. There are issues with the grading in Torrey's Lane. I mean, the pavement is in a poor condition. You can see that it's rutted on the sides. There's issues with Torrey's Lane itself. But it is a public road. It is a road that, you know, has been deemed adequate for access. It's used every day by its occupants.
Now, there does seem to be, I don't know if I want to call it a swell, that's maybe a strong word, but there is from the road, there's kind of a dip before it kind of goes up the hill. So what is the proposed, is it going to be sort of a set grade, or like, what's the proposal to sort of get the water that would be, that would sit in that swell away?
Yeah, so what we're proposing is from the edge of the pavement, you'd come in flat for the first 10 feet, and then it starts grading up onto the lot where the garage is, is how it starts coming up.
And then where that transition is, then what's the, what would that be to take the water away?
Nothing. It matches grade on either side. So if water's flowing across that in the pre-development condition, it would continue to do so. It would continue to flow in that direction. We're not proposing any new swales or anything along Torrey's Lane itself.
Is there the potential that there would be water sitting in that swell? I mean, in the untouched condition? Meaning that, not the driveway itself, but to the, it would be like to the left of the driveway or to the right? Like, I see from my picture that I took that it looks like there's a little bit of a dip.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you'd still get water in that dip in the proposed condition.
Okay. Is there any way that you could mitigate that or drain that away, or is that something that you don't think is going to be an issue?
I don't see it as an issue at this point. You know, that dip would fill up with water in its existing conditions today, and then overtop onto Torrey's Lane, and that's, it's going to continue to function in that same capacity when this gets built.
But I think the point is to try to make it better so it doesn't overtop on Torrey's Lane.
Right, yeah. That swell is located in the public right-of-way. It's off this property. So what we've done is we've tried to eliminate the runoff going to it by proposing the pervious driveway and doing the roof drywall system so that we're below the thresholds of the stormwater.
Is there any difference since the septic system is going to be underneath the driveway as far as the absorption or the, and the reason I ask is, like, in our septic system, I noticed that it tends to be very dry above it, more so than the rest of the lawn. And I don't know whether it's because it's sucking the moisture away, or?
Yeah, it's typically because when you do it, when you do one of these septic systems, you're digging out the topsoil, the subsoil, and you're importing sand, okay? So you're importing sand, you're constructing your septic system, and then you're putting six inches of loam or whatever on top of that. Usually, that six inches of loam isn't thick enough to retain that much water for growth above it. So where you have that large bed of sand under this area, you get that wicking effect or drying effect.
So I guess what I'm trying to, like, make a connection here is, potentially, could that be better to help wick away that moisture?
Potentially, it could be. Potentially, it could be better in that area where the septic is. We didn't have glacial till with our test pits here. It might change as you go down gradient on the other side of the street. Again, the test pits here were all loamy sands and coarse sands.
Okay. And I had a question, just, this was more of a, let me see the, can I get the, who was the architect on this, on the drawing? I was just curious why the windows don't align to the garage. That bothers me visually, but I know it has nothing to do with the approval.
Well, it does have some impact. I mean, it's supposed to be, it's supposed to...
It's supposed to be like a carriage house. That's my, that the idea is that it's a carriage house above a garage, but the window, the four windows, which are, you know, they're trying to be a dormer, but really, it's a second story, they're a little off-center, because there's the window all the way to the right, which is the bathroom window.
Yep.
So that's a little bit of a, just issue, but I guess right now, I'm just more concerned about the drainage.
If the rain falls on the proposed new driveway, would it be out of line to think that, that when the water hits that, the hard surface and it streams down the driveway, won't it end up in Torrey's Lane?
I don't know enough about the system, Greg.
Sure. We provided a detailed pervious pavement. It's a paver on the surface, and then underneath that is a crushed stone base, and underneath that is a geotextile fabric where it'll interact with the soil underneath. So if the water goes in between these pavers and into the crushed stone and into the soil...
And in the winter, when everything is colder and things are more frozen and it keeps raining on that, can we expect a lot more water on Torrey's Lane?
Sure. Well, what would happen right now in the winter is the ground would freeze, and any water that would hit the ground at that point in the winter would be running off to Torrey's Lane in that condition. So whether it's paver or whether it's frozen lawn surface, you'd be getting the same amount of runoff during those frozen months of the year.
So is there, just going back to the question, is there a certain amount of runoff that comes with pervious pavers?
There is. The curve number on it is similar to the curve number with a loamy sand and a sandy loam soil that you would have, as you have now. You have sandy loam for the top, so with the pervious, with the pervious pavers, you're actually providing a direct hydraulic connection to the soil underneath, which has a better perk rate. I don't have the curve number data with me. I could provide that if you requested it, and I can give it to you, you know?
Well, the curve number data won't tell me anything. I was looking for an answer to the question.
Sure. We didn't, I didn't run a full curve number analysis on this. This project doesn't trigger the stormwater bylaw, so...
I'm just asking for your professional opinion.
My professional opinion?
Are we going to see more sheet flow down into the street?
You're not going to see, you're not going to see a significant volume off of this driveway. You're going to be trapping, actually, a lot of the water that's in the backyard of this house, with the back of this building being how it is graded, you're going to be trapping some of the water in the backyard, so you'll get more infiltration in the backyard. You're going to be diverting the volume of this roof into a drywall system. Immediately off the driveway, there might be a small increase, but the net effect, looking at the lot in its entirety, I think you're pretty close to what exists today when you do the proposed analysis on this.
One additional question. I see that there's a side door. So if you're looking on the front elevation, to the right, there's a side door, but on the plan, I don't see any sidewalk or brick pavers or anything connecting that. So is that going to be an impervious surface, or what's the, are there calculations as part of that?
Sure. It wouldn't be an impervious surface. You'd run pervious pavers over to it. You'd connect the driveway.
Okay.
Yep.
And the same thing, like, how, the main door, is that door, or would the main door be in the back?
The main door is coming in through the garage. So you'd come in through the garage, or you'd come in through that side door that you mentioned.
Right, so then, like, for instance, if people are visiting or whatever, their main entrance would have to be, there'd have to be some kind of favor to go to the side entrance.
Correct, yeah.
I just have a question, Greg, about the engineering, about, with the permeable pavement, or here, the pervious paver driveway.
Yep.
I was just wondering if you could comment about how the BM, the best management practices and engineering guidance for pervious paver installation works on a septic, like, above a septic system, because I just haven't seen that before.
Sure. Well, I mean, the volume of water that's going to be infiltrating through this, through this driveway, right on top of the septic system, would be the same volume of water that would be infiltrating through the septic system if this was over in the side yard. We're not, we don't have a large catchment area that we're directing a large area to this... this one infiltration point above the septic. It literally is just the water that's landing on top of it. And it's going to be landing on top of it and infiltrating again, whether it's under this pervious driveway or if it's in the side yard.
Okay. Is there a hydraulic connection between the drain in the back and the septic system in the front?
No, there's no hydraulic connection between the two. The roof leaders would have, you know, an overflow on them, so when the dry wells, you know, when they over top at some point, it would flow over land around the front of this building.
So this won't affect the performance of the weeching field?
No.
By having additional groundwater sort of injected at that point?
No.
I just noticed, I know we were talking about the studio, but just looking closely at the plans, like, there's really no set bedroom area or sleeping area, so it'd be like a Murphy bed or something?
It's set up as a, you know, a studio.
Well, it's, at least on the plans, it's listed as living, and there's a fireplace, and then on the other side is the kitchen area, like a gal, kind of a galley kitchen. But I would find very strange to put a bed there somewhere, but, so there's no loft or attic space or anything like that?
What drawing?
Right here.
One. No, there's no loft proposed on this.
Okay. So it's just one big room?
That's, that's how it's drawn, one big room.
They could have a sleep sofa.
That'd be about the only way you could really do it and have, like, what, if you're facing the fireplace and the other side's the kitchen. Yeah. Okay. Well, that's just looking at the design.
And why is it, why is it located where it's located?
The building?
Mm-hmm. That's one of the... Note that it's at the very far corner, and it looks like you sort of tucked it as far over as you could.
Sure.
Against all the offsets?
It's sixteen feet off the side. It's a fifteen-foot minimum setback. It's located in that location. That's where it's going to provide the least steep driveway. That's the location where we had perk tests that were suitable, you know, all contained within that area, you know, and it provided a little bit of separation from the existing house as well.
And what's next to it? I can't really tell from looking at this layout.
Sure. There's a fence that runs along the northern property line, and then there's a single-family residence on the, on that property.
How close is the single-family residence?
I don't know the answer to that.
Is this something that is going to be in somebody's view shed somewhere? This structure? I'm just trying to get a sense. We face this over and over again.
Sure.
What about trees there? Have you seen, do you know how close everything is?
I can't see the other house. I have a picture. I see the fence. That's the fence right there, Steve.
Yeah. That's where he's calling, right?
Right.
So the question is...
There's an accessory map here. Oh, a G I S.
In the big package?
A G I S.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
And the Norris property is higher in elevation. You'll certainly see it.
Okay.
The Norris property is which one?
The one to the northeast, northwest on Cedar Crest.
Oh, you have a...
Actually, when you look at this, so here's Torrey, so it's going over here.
So that house?
So there's some kind of little, I don't know, building.
There's something there.
There's a garage over there, so it's maybe a little bit less of an impact.
So it's probably, yeah.
Maybe, but lots of, it's not very big.
Yeah, let's see this.
Thanks. So it's going to go right in here.
Any more questions?
I think I'm finished with the questions.
How about from the public? Any other questions, comments?
Is this our opportunity?
This is your opportunity.
For some of our, so we have lived in our property, we've 22 years in the neighborhood, and we, we have seen a lot of changes in the neighborhood, and, you know, that's understandable, you know? Town grows and develops, but we do get concerned about maintaining the environmental integrity of our neighborhood. So we had a lot of concerns about runoff and flooding, just knowing all the water issues in that neighborhood, and that we're also very close to the watershed protection area. We're concerned about the increase in the size of the building. It is a very small lot, and the original house is very small, and it kind of fits with the, you know, with the small lot size, and also, you know, because most of the land is in this hill, it kind of sits top this little level flat spot. And it seems as though the proposed structure, even though there's only going to be 748 square feet of living space, that's the second floor of a two-story structure. And so there's the garage, too, even though it's not living space, it's still square footage of that building, and I'm not sure why that's not calculated in terms of the size of the We talked about that. We were concerned about the septic. It alleviated some of our concerns, but like you, I'm also concerned about putting in a large septic area, like, right next to the street. Our other concern is the width of Torrey's Lane. Torrey's Lane is a very small street. It's only 15 feet of paved width. And I know that when I went and Karen kindly showed me the plans and the map that she had, it showed that, in fact, the town owns part of the land between Torrey's Lane and where the beginning of Karen's property is, and chose not to create a wide road there, but I assume that that's why the town has the rights to that property, right? In event they ever wanted to widen the road. So we're concerned just about the activity of people going in and out of the driveway with that, just that small amount of space, and how it might have pinched on our property because there's really not a lot of room there, especially in the winter where there's big snowbanks. The road gets even narrower. So we're kind of concerned about the traffic going in and out of the driveway, and especially any large vehicles that need to get in, and whether they're going to be able to safely and accurately get in and out of that driveway. There's going to be, it's going to be quite a large driveway with room to park like two vehicles and then also an entranceway. Excuse me. And the landscaping, there used to be a huge, like, 200-year-old oak tree in the yard, and that has been taken down, and there were some other large mature shrubs and things that were also taken down. And so we're concerned, too, that that might be causing some problems, and we didn't see in the plans much in terms of landscaping, you know, like rain gardens or other ways of changing the property so that it would have less impact on us as the neighbors. Because basically, this new structure is going to be sitting in our front yard where, you know, we used to have the meadow with the house kind of away, which is the original plan for that, for that house.
And finally, this is the, this is the fourth construction project in about four and a half years, right, right over there. And when we talk about character of the neighborhood, there's only one house per, 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 per plot here, and we're talking about making two houses, septic tank, extra driveway on a very small piece of land that's not in the character of this neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Let me just see if there's any other comments.
I'm Jessica Murphy, Seven Cedar Crest Lane, and I agree wholeheartedly that it's going to make it look like two living structures on one very small lot. And I'm a witness, I grew up on Seven Cedar Crest Lane, and we are very high elevation. I watched just a regular rain just wash down the road, and I spent many, many, many part of my life in their basement with a family that lived there years ago, waiting up to my knees and water playing in it. But I also see it even to this day, and even if they have done improvements to their basement now, who's to say it's going to hold up in the future with all this, a driveway going right across from their house? I'm telling you, the water runs down just like a river. It's, it's, that was originally where their house is. A field. They planted strawberries there. And any kind of rain puddled all through their living space and other neighbors that abut down. I just don't want to see another big huge structure going in a small space that's going to depreciate my house. I already have a house next door to me that's going to wreck and ruin with animals living in it. I'm sick of looking at it, so this is just one more disturbance for me.
Thank you.
Yeah. We're also concerned about our property value going down as well with...
Let's, I, I...
Sorry.
Sure. We'll do one at a time, and then you can jump back in.
Thank you, sorry.
Yes.
It's just a question for the board, Steve B. Orkland. If not for the use of the second floor of this proposed building as an accessory dwelling, is there anything in the zoning bylaw that they would have to come to the planning board for? And they could still build the structure, they could still do the driveway, they don't have to do any of the stormwater stuff that they're proposing. So it's only because they want to use it for her to live in that's causing the engineer to design all of this stuff? And again, I understand Torrey's Lane has problems, there's no doubt. I drive by there, but I don't know if it's necessarily this particular woman's issue to have to correct everything in Torrey's Lane just because she wants to live on the second floor.
What she's impacting of her neighbors, that's what...
That's what all the stormwater stuff is for.
Okay. Thank you.
My answer, my question is, would she have to come to you for anything if she wanted to build the structure without accessory dwelling?
I don't know. Without looking at it any harder, I don't know. So we had one other comment here?
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot my comment.
Okay. So let me go back to Ann.
Well, the valuation of our property, yeah. We're concerned about the, about how it's going to impact the value of our property, yes, with having this structure basically almost in our front yard.
Okay.
How tall is this structure?
It's a one and a half story building. It's not a full level on the second floor. It's a dormered second floor. Total height to the top of the plate, 10, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. Approximately 23 feet in height, if you're looking at it from Torrey's Lane. If you're looking at it from the backyard, it's only going to appear to be a single story because of the walkout at that second level. 23 feet at the max.
Now, is that to the ridge line?
To the ridge line.
Okay. All right. I understand people's concerns about basically having another house on a very small lot, but I think that if the applicant wanted to build a garage with storage on the second level, they certainly could as a matter of right. So I understand the dilemma. I mean, we've had, we had a situation where somebody rebuilt a garage and then decided that they would put in an accessory apartment above it, you know, in the garage. And that opened a whole can of worms because it was too close to the next door neighbors. And if they had come here first, some things may have been mitigated. Looking at this G I S for Torrey's Lane and, you know, there are issues. There's no question that there are issues. But we all have property rights. So, those are my concerns.
Let me, okay. Just ask the question. Do I need to make the driveway as wide as the driveway is?
We, it needs to be as wide as it is because it's a two-car wide garage door. We do have it tapering down, you know, to just a single lane where it connects to Torrey's Lane, but in front of those garage doors, you do need at least 20 feet of space to back a car out, so you do need that double width up to the top.
I think he's talking about the fact that they're so far apart, or so they would appear to be. I mean, could they not be...
The doors are not intuitive.
Hmm?
Doors are not intuitive as a use.
In other words, could they be closer together? Is that what you're asking?
Is it possible to put the driveway where the existing driveway is already on Cedar Crest?
No. No.
Really hard to do.
Yeah, seriously. What I'm talking...
If you don't like the do now, you're not going to like it again.
These two together. It does seem like they're pretty close, because there's 15, wait, from center to center of the doors, there's 15 foot two.
In between the doors is the, is 15, or sorry, five feet. In between, in between the doors.
If you moved the doors over, they'd be, you could center them under the window visually. If you moved the right door over to the left a bit?
And the left door over to the right a bit.
Yeah. But...
Well, maybe functionally, the whole space is...
You're still going to have the driveway...
It's 4 feet wide. It's a big garage.
Huge.
But you'd still have the width going around the door, the pedestrian door.
He's suggesting I put the pedestrian door on the end, leave the garage doors the way they are, take out the middle, middle, middle door.
I'm sorry, I don't quite follow.
You look at it in the front, you see the two garage doors.
Uh-huh.
Don't I have a door going in through it from the middle of the garage doors?
No. It's over here.
Okay, it's outside.
On the side.
On the side.
Side.
I mean, what I'm asking, I think what is being asked here, can these doors be telescoped closer together?
I don't see why they couldn't be.
So then that means, as Bill has pointed out, then the driveway going, the apron, if you will, does not need to be as wide?
Yeah, correct. You could, you could probably bring them together another two and a half feet.
Just two and a, so it only...
You're going to want, you're going to want two and a half feet between your two garage doors to provide structural support between them.
Right. But how much...
That would allow the driveway to come in again by two and a half feet less than well.
Which doesn't seem like a lot.
Is the, is the width of the garage set by the cars or by the...
So that lower level...
Seems like it's 17 feet per bay, basically.
So what we have is inside that garage, you know, are the stairs to get up to the accessory dwelling above it. So you're losing, you're losing approximately five feet, so you've got 29 feet of width on that garage where the cars are.
Yeah, functionally, it seems like you'd want to have, when I'm looking at the plan here, the garage door that would be on the front elevation to the right, you'd want that to move over, because right now it's pretty close to that door and pretty close to the stairway. Therefore, if you're pulling a car, you're not going to have a shelf or other things there, whereas if you moved it down, like you said, the two foot six between the other door, then you'd have more space between that door, the garage door, and the pedestrian door going into the house, where you could have a shelf and other things. And it would at least reduce the apron a little, a little bit potentially. And it would at least reduce the apron a little, little bit potentially.
Might make the place look even more offset.
Right, it would.
Um, would it? Actually, by moving that over, if you look at where the windows up above are, take the front elevation and take the garage door on the right and move it to the left about two foot six, it would be about in alignment with the other windows.
With the one on the left...
Then you're creating that, kind of the big blank wall on the right.
Right.
Well, you, you are increasing that, that's correct.
Yeah, but, but the thing is, the want of two and a half feet, it, it seems to be...
Well, okay, it just was a suggestion.
Yeah, I think you realign your windows with it without taking away the two and a half feet.
Okay, I had a couple more questions, just, where's, what's happening with all the fill?
Be trucked offsite.
So it's all gonna be disposed of? Nothing's being disposed of on site?
Probably strip off the lawn and reuse the lawn, otherwise the fill's coming offsite.
Okay. Let's see. I, I think somebody asked the question of where the perk tests were done, where, where are they, where were they done?
Sure, they're done between the accessory dwelling and Torrey's Lane. We provided their locations on that septic plan. They're directly underneath the septic system. There were four test pits dug on this side of that hill.
Okay, so they were done over here somewhere?
Correct.
Okay. And groundwater was identified where, how far?
Greater than, greater than 10 feet in depth.
10 feet from where?
The ground surface.
Well, the ground surface goes like this right now, so...
Yep, so we...
From, from the finished driveway, where's the groundwater? Or from, I'm just...
From the finished driveway, where's the groundwater?
Yeah, how much separation between the septic system and groundwater?
You're required to have four feet separation, we've designed it at four foot, one and a half inches.
Okay, so that really is where the groundwater is? It's barely...
What we did for groundwater table is we took the bottom of our deepest test pit, which was dry. We assumed that if we went an inch deeper, we would hit groundwater and we used that for our design.
So you didn't actually identify groundwater?
No, no, it's greater than 10 feet.
Okay, so where, wherever the bottom of that test pit is, is four feet below the bottom of the leaching field?
Correct.
Okay. So, what happens? So did we resolve the bedroom issue? This is a single bedroom. There's no build out, nobody's gonna sort of come back in later and put two bedrooms in this thing, anything like that?
Nope.
Right?
Nope, it's a single bedroom accessory dwelling.
Not even a bedroom.
Well, that's what worries me. It's a big open space that's subject to modification during construction.
May I ask, what are you gonna do with the old septic system?
Sure, it gets abandoned in place. You pump out any water that's in it, that gets disposed of at the wastewater treatment plant. And then you crush the septic tank and you fill it in with dirt, so it prevents, you know, caving in in the future, and you leave it in place, you abandon it.
And what are you doing with water?
The water gets connected from the existing house out to the accessory dwelling.
So the existing house is paying the water bill for the accessory dwelling?
Correct.
How is that gonna work if somebody comes along?
There's always the option of providing a sub-meter, and you could sub-meter it, determine how much is going out. But it's all meters going into the primary house, so the homeowner can determine if they wanna do that or not.
I think the, the letter I read from the water department said that there was the, they approved of either two options. That was, the service coming from the house or from Cedar Crest, not Torrey's.
Yep.
But they, but they did specifically say coming from the house, that would be okay.
Hmm. It'd be interesting to see whether there's water pressure left there. Okay, well, any other comments?
Nope.
All right. What are, what do you...
I, I, yeah, I have some questions. So this goes back to Mr. B. Orkland's comment, Ann kind of touched on it. I understand that there was a, this project has already been approved by the zoning board of appeals, but has yet to been filed. What, since we don't have that, what was the square footage that the Z B A approved of the building?
Sure, the square footage, we provided the same floor plans to the Z B A, we provided the same site plan. The house as it exists by itself is 1,088 square feet. The proposed accessory dwelling adds 748 square feet of living space. It was an approval for those two combined, which is 1,836 on the lot.
Okay, so, so here, herein lies kind of my issue in terms of what I'm understanding from the bylaws. An accessory, the accessory dwelling bylaw states that it, the, the, the accessory dwelling can only be 750 square feet or 40 percent, whatever's greater. In this case, it's 748 square feet. And that, and obviously this person, the applicant can build the structure as of right, you know, if it's a garage or a barn or whatever, they can build that structure and planning board doesn't really have much to say about that per se. And that has been further affirmed by the Z B A decision. Since the driveway design currently meets also the part of the bylaw about the off-street parking for accessory dwellings, for instance, you could park both cars in the driveway without pulling them into the garage. What I worry about is if, since, since Z B A's approved this for 1,836 square feet, if at some point in the future, the garage space was converted to living space, then it would, in essence, be above the 750 square foot threshold for accessory dwellings and in violation of the accessory dwelling permit by law. That's, so that's my biggest issue.
Sure. Yep, any build out of the interior would require a building permit.
We can condition, so you can't expand the accessory dwelling.
Yeah, I mean, that's all we would do, right?
I think we normally condition that, don't we?
Yeah.
And the approval's gonna be based on these drawings?
Yeah.
Which predicates the draw of the variety.
Okay.
Stevie has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to ask one more question about the height of the groundwater. So, 'cause I wanna be sure that I heard it, that the, when the water table is measured from the actual low point of the land down to the water table, including underneath the septic system and what's gonna be required for both the pervious driveway and what's gonna be required for the septic system, then you're going to meet by one inch the requirement that the drainage not bleed into the groundwater.
And we have separation.
Now, did you say four feet? Four feet is the, four feet is the...
That's the required separation, yeah.
Required separation, and there's four feet, one, one inch.
To the bottom of their lowest test pit. Tell me if I'm saying this right, which, in which you didn't find an indication of groundwater?
Correct.
So, and the bottom of that test pit was what elevation?
We did groundwater at elevation 33.3, which was test pit three and four.
And out of curiosity, what time of year...
And is that, just a second, please. And what is the, what's the elevation of the driveway?
Elevation of the driveway is at elevation 41.
Forty-one.
Approximately seven feet higher, that accounts for the four-foot groundwater separation to the bottom of the septic system. The septic system being about a foot thick and then having 18 to 24 inches of cover over the septic system to finish grade.
Okay. Yes?
Just a quick question, what time of year was, was that done to get those figures? Just out of curiosity?
Test, test pits were done June 24th, 2015. They were witnessed by Ralph Cole of the Citroen Board of Health.
Okay, June, okay.
Any other comments? Yes?
I just wanted to try and clarify, if I could, for Ben. If you have a 3,000-foot barn on your property and you wanna do an accessory dwelling, you can take a corner of that and do a 750-square-foot accessory dwelling, but you can't expand it to the size of the building. So it doesn't matter how big the building itself is, it's just, you're, they're allowed to have 750 square feet of finished space.
Right, right. I understand that, but you see my concern, right, with, if it's converted or whatever?
Illegal.
Not like everybody's gonna go looking at it every day.
Okay, so what's the...
I just, I have one more brief comment. It just has to do, if, if this is approved and they are going to do the pervious driveway, is that for it to, since there's a lot of concerns about runoff from the pervious driveway, you know, into the Torrey's Lane and towards the, I guess that would be the, the east, easterly direction, kind of, I just wanna note that really for these, the permeable favors to fudge property, the, the joint spacing needs to be cleaned to find sediment frequently so that, or, I mean, there's a schedule for this stuff, it's in the best management practices, but should be cleaned regularly so that it maintains the same permeability. And I think that that's important to do so that it works right and that just doesn't end up being impervious over time.
If the project is approved, I will hope that the homeowner will consider landscaping options to mitigate potential runoff and also the impact, the visual impact on the neighborhood.
Yeah, let's, we didn't get back to that, thank you for pointing that out. What is the landscaping plan next to this?
Outside of the driveway, the landscaping would just be grass, be lawn. That's it?
Just the big structures sitting there?
Right in front of us.
Right in front of, right, basically sitting in our front, yes.
It's primarily lawn, grass area right now, as it exists.
Well, that's, that's not what it'll be when you build this thing, it'll be a big structure, right? So I guess the question is, is there, is there some notion or thought of landscaping this to give it a little better look than a two-car garage?
Well, in the, looking at it from the front is primarily gonna be the driveway. We could provide some bushes along the, the, the front facade of it or along the side facades. There's just some foundation plantings, absolutely.
Yeah, but the corner right now has a whole series of trees and bushes and rocks.
This thing is pretty stuck, right? So, it seems like there ought to be a landscaping plan.
Said there was a big oak tree.
There was a big oak tree and there also was a really large, probably 50 or 60-year-old rhododendron that also like sort of, you know, created some privacy between us and Karen, you know, and it, and it, you know, a lot of it died off during the blizzard year, you know, and we had all that snow and a lot of the rhododendrons all died around town. But she hasn't replaced that with anything, she took it out and so we are, and she also had talked at one point about taking down the large U that's there, which also provides a little bit of privacy and, you know, but we are, so we are concerned about whether or not there will be any landscaping to, you know, as I said, sort of mitigate the visual impact and provide us with the privacy that we, you know, have enjoyed in our house. I mean, our view out of our living room windows now is going to be looking at a huge garage and a driveway. And the road is only 15 feet wide. It's not like it's, we're talking about a full width of a street here, so...
Is there a landscaping plan you can put together on this?
There, there isn't a landscaping plan that we've put together on this, no. We were gonna restore any of the disturbed areas with lawn surface outside of the driveway is all we were planning on doing. You know, I have to imagine the homeowner plans on doing some landscaping on their own lot, they are gonna be residing at this lot. There were no criteria in your bylaw for landscaping associated with an accessory dwelling.
Yeah, this is a special permit, this is trying to make it fit into the character of the neighborhood, which is really part of an accessory dwelling. And so I think it's well within a set of expectations that, you know, the change, I mean, this is, it's putting a fairly large structure on a fairly small lot. And it seemed like there should be some ability to, to provide, you know, some compromise here in order to do this.
As you said, I think the expectation is, is that there will be some landscaping here. What I'm saying is, is the special permit procedures for an accessory dwelling are very well spelled out in section 530.2. The word landscaping isn't referenced once in any of that section. We're open to doing some foundation plantings around the front, where you'd be looking at it along the facade, along the street, where the neighbors would be seeing it. Other than that, around the back isn't gonna be enjoyed by the others, it'll just be the front that we'd be looking at doing landscaping on. If you wanted to add some conditions for foundation plantings along the front, we'd entertain that.
And when you say along the front, do you mean like in, literally next to the driveway or along that, for lack of a better word, the, the swale that I talked about? Like, or would you be able, you couldn't go actually into the right of way?
No, not inside the right of way, but to the, you know, to the right and to the left of the garage doors along the front of the building.
When I'm looking at the existing corner where there's a, there's, looks like two or three large trees and some rock and mulch and bushes, that's quite screened that corner, the corner of Cedar Crest and Torrey's. There's a, there's a number of large plantings right there. If that could be extended maybe a little bit toward the, the new structure? So what I'm seeing is like right there, Steve, on the corner?
Yes, you all that? Yeah.
That's not gonna be ripped out, is it?
That's right, where the septic tank is going and that's where the piping is going associated with it.
So those things are all coming out?
A, a good portion of that will be coming out.
Okay, well, that's news to me.
So this is gonna be somewhat...
Stripped.
Stripped down? Is that the case?
They're gonna take all of it because of the...
One at a time, please. Is that the case?
Not all of it, I would say approximately half of it will be removed when the septic system goes in.
Do you have a picture again?
I didn't realize the septic system was gonna be that far.
So this big evergreen that's there is coming out then? Is that right?
Show me a picture. The, the backside of that, what, the front cap will say, you know, I don't see us cutting the trunk of that, but we'll be trimming the back of that, absolutely.
Wanna see?
Is that the plan, Ken?
I don't. I have some... Okay.
Just the back.
There's another large tree that sits on, kind of on the property line of between Karen's property and the property that just, that's next to it on, on Greenfield, where there's a small driveway. Is that tree gonna be taken down? Is that, I'm wondering, so now that we've established that, 'cause I was thinking about this too, the amount of construction that's being done is going to disrupt the roof system of, there are several large trees on the property line, not our property, obviously 'cause we're across the street, but are, are additional trees gonna be taken down between Karen's property and, I wanna say the Darkanchillos, 'cause they just moved, I don't know our new neighbor's last name yet, but that property on, on...
The fence.
Greenfield. I, I like to...
That's over here.
Yeah.
Know if I can, know a little bit about that.
So that's up here.
That's in the corner by the fence.
Yeah, it's right up there.
This tree is that tree, right? Or something like that?
Yeah. I don't think it would be touched, you're not going as, up as far as the fence, are you, in the back?
I'm saying, we're out back, no, along the side lot... Along the side law line, we are working almost up to the fence along the side.
Right, so that tree is probably gone, right?
That tree is gone.
Yeah.
And what about the, the, the old septic tank? Are they gonna be removing all the trees and vegetation for the old septic? The septic tank is by the corner of Cedar Crest?
No. That stays.
Shouldn't have any trees on the septic tank?
Shouldn't be, but the septic tank will stay in place when it gets banned.
Just crushed. All right.
Well, I guess I, I would like to see, I would like to see a landscaping plan that sort of mitigates the starkness of this particular structure myself.
I agree, I agree.
I think it makes sense with the stripping.
Basically, they're clear-cutting.
Yeah.
That's what they're doing. And it's going to have a tremendous impact. Regardless of a garage as a matter of right, it's still going to have an incredible impact that has to be somehow mitigated.
Yeah, I think, you know, my comment or my thoughts on it is that the structure visually, as far as sort of architecturally besides the centeredness, it, it looks like a carriage house, which is what I think that's supposed to be, which is good. But I do think that because of the situation where, you know, there, it is such a small lot, the road is very narrow, that we have a good compromise where we could do a landscaping plan and try to mitigate this to some degree. And still, hopefully, have it be, you know, everyone to some degree agree upon it.
Is that something you're willing to do?
Absolutely.
We'd wanna have you come back and present a landscaping plan.
And, and at that time, I know, would it be possible, since we did have this discussion about the front doors, the garage doors, to look at maybe, again, how you could mitigate and make the pavement as narrow as possible, or narrow as it needs to be? And so if those doors could be moved together? You know, it's a small thing to get two and a half feet, but it might actually end up visually being better, and then better access, or I should say, better availability for groundwater and more seepage.
Well, that could create more space in the front for planting, right?
Exactly.
Which would be good.
Exactly.
I think the septic system precludes you from putting something significant in here.
Yeah, in the front, along that, along the edge, right?
That's the piece you wanna block out. And I can put ground plantings along the side where I take and extend, extend the L to get into the side door. And I can mirror that on the other side.
But the leaching field is primarily under the driveway, so therefore...
The septic tank goes to the left.
To the left, oh, okay.
It all, you have it over there.
Do I? I thought I hinted back.
Here it is, it comes right here, you know? And they have to get a pipe coming all the way over to, to, from the main house.
So what, so between the pipe and Torres Lane, could you do anything there? Could you put a bush, like a rhododendron or something, like, right there, yeah?
I don't know, they're gonna have to tell us that. I don't know what kind of offset you need from leaching fields and all that for, you know, you don't want root systems in the leaching field.
Of course not.
But it looks like, you know, I don't know how much room that is, but it looks like there might be some room.
Do we wanna continue this?
Yeah, I'd like to see, I'd like to see a landscaping plan.
Okay. Because we're an hour behind our other public hearing.
So, would you be prepared to do that, come back?
Yes.
Okay. Can we get a...
Yeah, I just wanna, yeah.
Go ahead.
Can we go over the, the timing for the other hearings that you have on August tenth? August twenty-fourth is seaside at Situate.
Well, it's not an hour.
Planning on doing the whole evening for that.
Yeah.
On the tenth, the plan is to start at seven with ninety and vinyl and to take possibly an hour and a half on that. If you only want to take a half hour, then, I, I mean, an hour as opposed to an hour and a half, you know, that's something maybe to think about. Eight-thirty, we have seven to nine Marshfield Ave. That's been advertised, we can't change that. After that, we've got some discussion on, I hate to say it, Blanchard Farm fencing. And then the Form A on Summer Street is, is back. So...
My guess on and vinyl is, that's gonna take every bit of an hour?
Oh, oh, no, we have it for an hour and a half.
Oh, an hour and a half? Oh, it's eight-thirty, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So maybe we could do this at...
Eight o'clock?
Yeah. We could try and do it at eight o'clock. Or you could do it at nine fifteen and then try and do the other things.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's do that instead.
Okay.
You said the meeting's already starting at seven?
Yeah, yeah. Have you guys, I don't know what kind of conversation you've all had about whether you can do that?
That's fine, yeah, I know. I was even gonna say we could potentially do it earlier, up to you guys, okay, all right.
Seven's as far as I go.
All right. Just drawing it out there.
Okay.
Okay, so we don't have a motion to continue, but if someone wants to make one, it would be to August tenth at nine fifteen P.M.
I'll make a motion to continue this hearing to August tenth with a date for filing of September first.
Second. Uh, is it a favor? Aye.
Thanks for the good discussion.
Thank you for here.
Thank you.
Considering our concerns.
Very good question there.
Thank you for answering all the questions.
I don't know if I have computer. This was something I was...
It's floating around somewhere.
I'm sorry, oh, yeah.
I don't have any, I don't know.
I don't have this.
No, no, I, I don't have any. Oh, yeah, I see that. Okay. Accessory dwelling special permit for ten Marshfield Ave. Who's got that one?
Good evening, Richard Torresney, and I am the owner of the property at ten Marshville Avenue.
Could you just give us an overview of what you are trying to accomplish here?
Yes, on June, so on June eighth, the board approved the construction of a storage shed on my property. There was a question regarding three existing residential units on the property. And Laura may be able to help fill in with some of that. I did file the forms.
Yeah, do, do you want me to jump in or go for...
Yeah, if, if you're done?
I'm done.
Okay.
Wow, that was quick. There were three accessory dwellings up above the business. It used to be something like natural pet. It wasn't really, that wasn't really the name of it, but you get the idea. And they had been constructed, I think, in the nineteen nineties. There is not enough land for them to each have their own land to be built by right, so there should have been a special permit at some point. And that came up in some of the discussion on the site plan review, and Mr. Torresney was willing to come in and make them all legit. So that's what this is about.
I note that is one of the many objectives under the accessory dwelling bylaw, to legitimize conversions, to enable the town to monitor conversions for code compliance. So, thank you for coming in.
You're welcome.
Let's see. Laura, did you have any other input on the actual conversion? And I think the only thing I saw was a question about egress?
Yeah, there was a question that Bob Vogel brought up about, two of the units look like they could have the second means of egress addressed fairly simply. The third one was a little more iffy. So that was put into the draft conditions as something you might wanna condition this on. Otherwise, it's really pretty straightforward. They're, they're all there, they're all functioning. This'll be a way to also make sure that they all get all their inspections for smoke detectors and things like that, so.
And Laura, may I ask, so the third egress that you're concerned with, what, what is the concern?
I think it's unit one. I think it's the front unit. The question is whether you can, you need to have two means of egress.
Oh, they do. Do they have two?
Well, I think that's between you and Bob Vogel, because he wasn't able to, you know...
Sure, no, no problem. I just was wondering because...
So where are they? Is there a layout plan we can see?
It's not really a plan, I don't think.
There's no layout.
I don't think there's a plan that sho, especially that shows the one in the front.
This, this apartment here?
Yeah, I think that, that's unit one, and that's the one that he had trouble envisioning how you would put a second means of egress.
Would you like me to explain where it is? Sure.
That's how you get in and out of this thing.
Yep. Let me look at my plans here to make sure I explain it succinctly. So on apartment one, you, one entrance in egress is walking upstairs. You can see a little foyer area on the, on the side of the building.
This area, right?
No, no, I'm talking on the side. On the, on the Central Ave side.
Okay.
And so you walk upstairs there, and there's a common hallway. You can get into that apartment there. On, there is a deck on the opposite side, along the river. There is a deck that runs all along.
Is that this here?
Yes.
And how do you get from the apartment to the deck?
Straight out, there's a door.
There's a door.
Yes.
And I'm sorry, I'm not envisioning the first entrance. A little set of stairs, it looks like there's a landing or something there.
Exactly, you said it better than I did.
And then what happens?
You take a right on that landing, and there is a door leading, going up a set of stairs. You can go, but, but this was my drawing, just to separate it, to show you the, the square footage, but it wa, it's not an architectural drawing. So you walk up a common set of stairs, and then you go to the right, and you can walk into apartment one. You go straight ahead, and you walk into apartment two. And apartment two also has a door on the deck.
So the door for apartment one leads right to the stairway?
Leads to a, a landing and then the stairway down.
Okay.
And then you're also showing a stairway off of Marshville Avenue? But that's not what you're talking about, right?
Right, that stairway off of Marshville Avenue just gets you into the first floor.
Oh, okay.
We're talking second floor.
Okay.
Is there a door from apartment one onto the deck?
Yes.
And is, there's a door from apartment three onto the deck?
No, apartment, oh, yes, all three onto the deck, correct.
And the hallway that runs on Central Avenue also goes into apartment three?
No.
Where's the second access egress on apartment three?
There, so that, at the top, you'll see behind apartments three, you'll see a set of stairs. At the top of the stairs is one entrance, and at the bottom of the stairs is another entrance.
That has stairs that go up?
Uh, that's a deck, it goes up. At the top of the stairs, you have an entrance into the unit. At the bottom of the stairs, you have an entrance to the unit. Yes, and it, there's inside stairs that walk up. Correct.
All right. So basically, you've told us that each one has access egress into areas.
That's correct.
Okay.
And we should just, as a condition of this, have, have the building inspector sort of verify it.
Right.
Um, where do you, where do they park?
There, the, the lot, the fifteen hundred square, fifteen thousand square foot lot, you can see the, and the building is, so, three quarters of it is, I'm sorry. Anyway, there's, there's a lot there with parking with slots, yeah.
The building's surrounded by parking.
Is it all gravel, that's what it is?
Yes.
I thought it would be mostly for the first floor stuff. Okay. Okay, and, and Laura, you said as part of, part of this, it would be, it would go through some kind of code review or inspection?
I think they're, they check, the, the fire department goes out and checks the carbon monoxide detectors and the smoke detectors and, you know, all those types of things.
I, I'm confident in all of that.
Yeah, it's a very nice building, and, you know, I've been inside of it.
Okay. Um, any other questions?
No.
Do we have a motion?
I move to make the following findings a fact. One, on June twentieth, twenty seventeen, Richard Torrancee applied for an accessory dwelling special permit for three existing dwelling units above a business at ten Marshall Avenue. Two, based on the application, the three accessory dwelling units are located on the second floor above the commercial space on the first floor. The bylaw requires that accessory units above businesses be above the first floor or street level, and no more than three accessory units may be in one building. Area requirements of Section six, ten point one, of ten thousand square feet for each family do not apply. The accessory dwellings meet the requirements, requirements of Section five thirty point two B. Three, the three accessory units will have two bedrooms each. Six parking spaces are needed and seven are provided. The accessory dwellings meet the requirement of Section five thirty point two G. Four, the accessory dwellings will be serviced by a septic system. The Board of Health previously commented under the site plan administrative review application that the rental units must meet the requirements of the state sanitary code, chapter two, as well as Section three oh three five oh, the housing bylaw of the code of general bylaws. Five, new exterior stairs needed to provide primary or secondary means of egress for each accessory dwelling shall be located to the side or rear, unless otherwise required by Massachusetts Building Code. Based on the plan provided with the application of the acting building commissioner has determined that this standard appears satisfied or feasible for two units, except for unit one. The acting building commissioner requires plans that show the second egress for this unit. If this egress is not construction, not constructed, the C.O. for the unit may be in jeopardy. Six, the application meets the standards of the Situate zoning bylaw for accessory dwelling special permit.
Just a question there, just, oh, we have, the building inspector just has to kind of verify, and that's it?
Yeah. Well, you need to provide him plans, and then he needs to...
Go out and look at it.
Go out and look at it, yeah. And hopefully that will satisfy everything. But that'll be up to the building inspector.
Yeah.
Is that, was that the end of the, of the fact? Do we have a second?
A second?
Oh, is it a favor?
I move to approve the special permit for an accessory dwelling of three units at ten Marshville Avenue with the following conditions for X, for accessory dwellings approved by the planning board after public hearing on twelve seventeen fifteen. Is that correct? Yes. One, except for any changes necessary...
Seventeen seventeen, yeah.
Those are those standard conditions that...
Oh, yeah.
Okay, gotcha. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall conform to the plans by WCB associates for the Hummer Rock Beach condominium site plan, C dash one dated eight, nine, two thousand and seven, and C one dated three, twenty, twenty seventeen, showing... C-1 dated 8/9/2007, and C-1 dated 3/20/2017, showing three apartments. Two, the number of accessory dwellings is limited to three above the existing commercial space in the location and size indicated on the plans submitted with the application. The number of bedrooms is limited to six. The accessory dwelling shall conform to all applicable standards in the building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire, and health codes and bylaws. Four, two means of egress satisfactory to the acting building commissioner shall be provided for each of the accessory dwelling units. Five, the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the planning board as modified for this accessory dwelling special permit shall be conditions of this decision and shall be included for recording at the registry of deeds.
Any second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Me too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Copy of the email from the building inspector. Have you received a copy of the email from the building inspector?
Okay. Onto old business, new business, et cetera. We have a Form A, 573 Country Way, Eight Hatchet Rock Road.
Oh, not this guy again.
Thank you.
I hate when they do that.
There goes, there goes the egress.
Yeah, really.
Before we get started on this, I would actually like to sort of raise this point with the board on what this A and R sort of represents. In looking at it, I was trying to understand how we could approve, do an A and R approval with a lot line that's less than what the zoning bylaws allow. And I think in the past, we've gone a little bit back and forth on this, but my read of it is that the, the planning board can't make an A and R decision on a lot that hasn't been approved, that's smaller and hasn't been approved by a special permit for less than 100 feet. And I understand there may be a special permit that has been maybe decided upon or issued, or we haven't seen it yet. But the sort of take on this is that we can only make a decision on an A and R for lots that meet the frontage requirement of the zoning bylaw. And before this has a special permit approval, it won't meet the requirement of the zoning bylaw. So therefore, as a board, we're sort of legally tied into having to do this under subdivision control, which is not what we want to do. And we've, Laura and I went back and forth on this a little bit, and just in terms of, you know, what, what sequence should we follow here, right? Because we talked about, can we, can we approve it and then have it held for the zoning board of appeals decision? And I think that, at least the way I've read everything so far, and we might need to get town council sort of tied into this, is that we sort of legally can't make the A and R decision until we have a proposal that meets all of the zoning bylaw requirements, which could be a 50-foot lot, except that it hasn't been approved yet by the zoning board of appeals. So we can't make that decision under that component of the law until it's conforming with that component of the law. So, so this is kind of a sequencing issue. This may not be an issue for you right now, if you've already got the special permit, but it's one I just wanted to raise with everybody, just because as I was reading this, I was trying to understand why we would do this sort of in a different sequence here.
Haven't we typically made sure that the zoning board makes their decision first?
That's what we should, my read of it is, that's what we should.
Right, but I guess we.
But it hasn't always happened, though.
It hasn't?
No. And so, part of the, part of the discussion here is whether that ought to be sort of our, our standard process or not. My read of it is that we, we sort of legally can't make a decision today on an A and R that's not conforming with the zoning bylaws, and wait for the ZBA to make it conforming. It has to be the other way around. But that's just, that's just sort of my read of it, and I'd like to make sure we sort of sort that out, and if we need to go to town council and get it cleared up, we should. But it appears from the A and R handbook that most of the law on this is sort of sorted out that way. So, so I start this whole conversation with that. I was told, though, that there is a special permit on this. Is that correct?
There is, yeah.
Do we have it?
No, it hasn't been filed with the town clerk yet, but it was unanimously approved last week by your zoning board. This, this is something that's gone back and forth, whether you file with zoning board or planning board first. I've done it both ways, and my interpretation of the bylaw, I think, I think the bylaw is very clear. If you turn to page 610.2B, 50-foot frontage lots.
Greg, I'm not questioning the bylaw. I'm not questioning the bylaw. I'm questioning the sequence upon which the planning board can make the decision.
Sure.
And if you don't have a special permit yet, we can't look at it as it's conforming with the bylaw. Okay?
So, yeah.
When you have a special permit, you know, everything's fine.
The special permit doesn't create the lot. It allows the construction of a house on a lot, implying that the lot already exists. The bylaw further specifies that a lot can, can have 50 feet of frontage as long as it has twice the area. The special permit with the zoning board is not to create a 50-foot frontage lot. It's to create, it's to construct a house on a 50-foot frontage lot. So, the bylaw specifically states what's required in a 50-foot frontage scenario. Again, this case, we've already gone to the ZBA, we already have that approval. The lots here do comply with that, so I'm hopeful we can move forward tonight with this.
Yeah, no, somebody told me you had the permit, so that's fine. I just wanted to raise it with the board here as we're talking about this, because I do think we need that legal interpretation. I don't think that, that particular interpretation sort of conforms with at least the case law that's, that's surrounding this. And so, I want to make sure we're, we're setting a process that is the right process here. So, so you said we have a special permit?
It's been, it's been voted by the zoning board of appeals, it has not been recorded at the town clerk's office yet, but it was unanimously approved last week.
All right. All right, let's, let's go through what you have here.
Sure. What we have is a Form A application submitted on behalf of the Saminsky family for property at 573 Country Way and Eight Hatchet Rock Road. The Saminskis owned the house at 573 Country Way and desired to divide it into two lots, creating the existing house lot and then creating one new buildable house lot. They were short approximately 1,200 square feet in land area, so they approached one of the abutters at Eight Hatchet Rock Road who had excess land area and negotiated a deal to purchase that excess area. What you see on the plan is the redivision of the lots. It creates lots one on Country Way, it has the requisite 100 feet of frontage, it has the required 20,000 square foot land area, this is a YR2 zone. Lot two would be the 50-foot frontage lot, having 50.34 feet of frontage on Country Way and having twice the land area, at least 40,000 square feet. That leaves Eight Hatchet Rock Road as lot number three, having 21,495 square feet. All of the land area here is upland land area, there are no wetlands on this site. Both Country Way and Hatchet Rock Road are publicly accepted town roads with utilities and adequate access. You're creating one new buildable lot, that new buildable lot is lot one.
And again, can you explain the zoning? Like, what was the override or the approval? You said the unanimous approval was for.
Sure, so when you create a 50-foot frontage lot, you apply under section 610.2 of the bylaw, point 2B. And what it says is, it says, "It shall be permissible by special permit granted by the Board of Appeals to erect a single-family dwelling on a lot which abuts at least one street for a way or distance of 50 feet." So we received that approval to, to construct a house on a lot, you know.
The house was already constructed, per se.
Correct, it was already constructed, per se.
I understand everything, that's all.
So, so we applied for them for that permit, and that was granted.
Within that 50-foot, is there a driveway? I'm assuming there is, right?
There is, yep.
I mean, is it existing?
There's an existing driveway?
There's an existing driveway to the house that's in that access handle, yes.
And there's an existing driveway in lot three as well, right?
Yes.
To Hatchet Rock Road?
Yeah.
So big.
I'm sorry.
So basically, this little sliver of land to the right of lot one and two, taken from lot three, has now been added to lot two.
Correct.
I love the creativity. It's amazing.
There's a, there's a note in the general notes there explaining that it gets added, and lot two further has a restriction that it can, it can't be further divided down the future. That gets recorded with the deed on lot two.
Love it.
I know Laura made the comment about the ratio that we might want to, at some future point, look at the, the ratio lot size again.
There's a lot shape factor that some towns have. Norwell has a circle that goes inside the lot. It is a little bit crazy stuff, it's kind of arcane, but it does prevent some of this creativity.
It is creative. I love rat tails.
Is there any thought?
No, it isn't a rat tail, is it?
Well, sure.
And it's.
Yeah.
So right now, is that all, I know you said it's upland, is it lawn?
Between the house and Country Way is, yeah, it was lawn primarily, in the back of the Eight Hatchet Rock.
Yeah.
That's lawn?
No, it's kind of wooded area, the lawn doesn't go all the way back.
All right. Are they going to, like, now mow this, or is that their responsibility?
No. I don't see them, I don't see them doing very much with it, I think it's a 12-foot wide strip.
12-foot wide, 104.5.
They could do that.
They could.
It's a bowling alley.
Bocce.
A water slide.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Do we have a motion?
I move to endorse, as approval not required, a plan of land in situet mass showing a division of parcels 26247 and 26241, 573 Country Way and Eight Hatchet Rock Road by Moran Surveying Inc. dated June 20th, 2017. As every lot on the plan will have access and frontage of at least the distance presently required by the zoning, situet zoning bylaw on Country Way or Hatchet Rock Road, when the zoning board of appeals approves a 50-foot frontage lot special permit. The plan shall be held in escrow until the ZBA decision for the 50-foot frontage lot is released from the town clerk for recording, so the two decisions may be recorded together.
I would modify it to say not when, because it's been represented that they have.
Okay.
Right? And that would be my reason for saying yes to this, so.
All right, where's the word "when"?
It says, "when," it says.
Hatchet, when the zoning board of appeals, you want, how do you want that to read?
It needs to read something to the, I can't. Given that, I would say that, they should say, "Given that."
All right.
The.
Zoning board of appeals has approved.
Right?
Given that. The zoning board of appeals has approved a 50-foot frontage lot special permit. The plan shall be held in escrow until the ZBA decision for the 50-foot frontage lot is released from the town clerk for recording, so the two decisions may be recorded together.
Is there a second?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. So flood, flood mapping with potential zoning law?
Yeah, I just, I put that on the agenda because back a couple of months ago, there had been an idea of floating around town hall, getting a really progressive change to the zoning bylaw, where in some of the really vulnerable coastal areas, where there are steady stream of razor reconstruct structures approved by the ZBA, where you take down like a little, little beach cottage and you replace it with a McMansion, it's right on the water, maybe it's elevated, maybe, you know, a lot of them have to be elevated, but they're still basically in harm's way. People are in them during storms, they have to be evacuated, it'd be difficult for emergency personnel to get out there. Anyway, this was an idea that was certainly around town hall, and then the decision was made not to go ahead with it so quickly. So that is not something that's happening in the foreseeable future. But there are some new maps that are being made of where our most vulnerable areas are. It's not just the FEMA velocity zone, there's some other areas in addition to that. And we're also, we are looking at combining the existing floodplain and watershed protection district with the, the actual FEMA map. So instead of referring to a map that was drafted in 1972, that doesn't really track completely with a FEMA map, all of the zoning will track with a FEMA map, and it will include all the requirements that FEMA has, which are now in the conservation regulations, and there are a few in zoning, but they're really scattered.
But you're saying the map itself won't be introduced as a replacement for the 1972 map in the zoning bylaw?
I think it will be, but we're not going to go, there doesn't seem to be much enthusiasm for going ahead with, oh, prohibiting additions on existing homes and prohibiting increases in the footprint of an existing house, which is usually what happens with a razor reconstruct. So that probably is not going to be going ahead.
I think that's unfortunate, because there was a piece in The Mariner today, and it has to do about this repetitive loss. And it reaches the point that it's not just our tax dollars at work, but it's also about putting people in harm's way and risking the lives of our first responders. That people, basically, many of the houses along our high-velocity zones now, today, are monuments to insurance. I mean, once upon a time, they were cottages, and they were broom swept, the porches tacked back on after a storm came and went. But now, they're McMansions, and they've been elevated and elevated and elevated, and we're spending a fortune on seawalls. And is there some way somehow, through education and whatever, to come up with something that, if you have a house that's in a high-velocity zone, and if it has been repaired more than 11 times, that maybe it's time to think about not allow, you know, when it's gone, it's gone. They have that on Martha's Vineyard. You can do whatever you want inside your house. You can repaint it, you can do whatever, but when it's gone, it's gone, and you can't put it back.
We looked at a bylaw from the neighborhood, we looked at oak boughs, and we looked pretty intensely at that. So, that was something that was thought about. It's just, I think the, the other side. the, the other side of all this is that there's a very active real estate market in coastal properties. So there has to be some kind of balance, and it's a tough balance to find. On the other hand, that article, and there was one in the Patriot Ledger, was the same article back a couple, it was Monday, essentially said that the flood insurance program is in a rep, and that this is not sustainable to keep paying out on these, these repetitive losses. So something will happen, something has to go.
Well, and, and I know that it's unpopular to sit here and say, we have to think about this. And I understand the real estate, and I understand the taxes, that it generates all kinds of taxes, but then you have to equate it to, well, how much are we spending to bail everybody out, vis-à-vis the amount of taxes that we are getting in return? And it is ultimately public safety. And, you know, we've, we've lost a couple of people in seventy-eight. We lose equipment, we lose everything. It's my understanding that to shovel off Central Avenue after a big storm, and it's not sand, it's rocks, it's seventy thousand dollars a pop. That's a lot of money.
Yeah, we'd say it's at least that.
At least. So, I mean, I feel like the Grinch that stole Christmas. But still, where is the common sense? And I know quite well that if we go a couple of years without a major storm, that all of a sudden, everybody's clamoring for oceanfront. And once upon a time, it was the shacks that were on the water. And those people with money, the ship captains and what have you, they were way up on River Street in Norwell, which used to be South Situate. They weren't on the coast. And it's only within the last, really, thirty to forty years that the coast has been, other than a summer cottage, has become year-round. And it is a very expensive commodity. So that's, it's unfortunate that it's been decided to put this off. We need to start the discussion. It's going to take a long time to educate people and get them to understand that it really is in their best interest, but I guess Hamerock, they've tried to explain it to Hamerock, and, and they still don't quite get it.
Well, they're looking at all kinds of innovative, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to ask about the process, when, you know, Ann was saying, and you both say it's kind of off the table for the time being. Who would be the person or entity or entities that would bring it back to the table? Is that the town administrator, or is it, like, what's, where, where did this, what was the genesis of this, and how did it come about? I know, is that too difficult?
No, it's not, you know, did come from the town administrator.
Okay.
And it also came from, I think, the experience of looking at how much money we spend, storm after storm after storm, and then looking at the zoning board and all of these razor reconstructs that are getting approved month after month after month. I mean, Ninety-One Hamerock Beach was one, but there are others. There are, you know, dozens of them. So it just didn't add up that we're putting more people in these very vulnerable areas. And the idea was, you know, whether we should really try to do something about it. But it's, it's politically extremely difficult to do. I think there is a lot of education that's going on. That's one of the things that Nancy Durfee tries to do, is to educate the public through these different meetings about different forms of coastal protection and, you know, all kinds of other issues, about, you know, what's happening with the coast. Sea level rise is another issue that we've paid quite a bit of attention to.
Well, it seems like that ought to be integrated into the, you know, next iteration of the master plan, right?
Well, I guess, I, I...
I mean, but it won't address the near-term churning that's happening now, right?
So I guess I concur with what Ann's saying and agree with her. But like, what as a board can we do? Like, what's the next steps, or what, what should we, or who should we be pushing on, or can we even?
Well, I would say the selectmen have had meetings, they had a meeting about the, the new mapping, which John Ramsey gave his presentation Tuesday. Those are things to go to and to speak up and to speak from all this. Because I think there may be a couple of selectmen that do support it, but, you know, maybe there isn't a majority, maybe there is, I don't know. But, you know, it's a political situation.
Yeah, okay.
Not popular at all?
The whole building community, the whole, you know, real estate community, the whole community of people that own property on the water have issues.
Yeah, but I think, I don't think it's right to take it, what's an insurance problem, and change it to a bylaw problem.
That's right.
It's not, it's a, it's not, it's not an insurance problem, it's a naturally occurring event problem, right? I mean, it's, it's happening and continue to happen. The question is whether the town is gonna look at it and try to be somewhat proactive about it, or whether they're just gonna wait for stuff to happen, right? And there's probably room for both of those kinds of activities, but it would seem to me, as a planning board and as a group sort of looking at the next generation master plan, that ought to be one of those big issues that sort of gets on, on the table for discussion, right? What is, what is our plan around, are we gonna do, you know, I mean, we're looking at, what's the impact of sea level rise to, to Situate as a whole, right? And are we gonna do foreshore protection? Are we gonna retreat from the shore? Can do a combination of both of those? Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of sort of other issues circling that, but it seems like that would be our form to bring it up and try to force the conversation. Now, I don't know where it will ultimately end up going, but it seems like it's a, such a big component of the town that it has to be part of, you know, kind of the next generation master plan. That would be my thought on it. But I don't know how you address this near-term, you know, churning, that things are happening and you're creating a bigger and bigger problem as you go, you know, so. Yes, sir?
If I can, yes, Steve Bjork, one again. Ann's commented it costs about seventy thousand dollars to go down to Hamerock and clear off the road. I was at a meeting last night at, down in Hamerock with the insurance people, and there's tremendous changes going on right now with the flood insurance program and how the oceanfront people are gonna have to pay more money to be able to protect their homes. So it's not something that comes out of the taxpayer's pocket. But there's about eight hundred homes, I think, in Hamerock, I think is what they stated last night. So, and they probably pay, I don't know, six, seven thousand dollars a year for each of those houses for their taxes. And I think each time you clear the road for seventy thousand dollars, that might be ten dollars out of the taxes of each of those people down there. So you could probably clear that road a hundred times maybe a year and still make plenty of taxes from them. The problem is that the flood plain bylaw that we have right now, it doesn't do anything, other than prevent new construction, the flood plain. So the bright idea of going to all the FEMA mapping instead of our nineteen seventy-two map, which everybody knows is a horrible map. There's no, there's nobody that will say that's a great map. It was drawn on the kitchen table, it was a guess of what's gonna flood, everybody's known that. But it, it controls a small amount of area. So if you change this to go to the FEMA maps, you're gonna start to include a lot more land area in a bylaw that doesn't allow new construction. So anybody who happens to own land in those areas, you just took it from them. It's my opinion that we have enough regulation controlling how homes are constructed in the flood plain, based on FEMA regulations now, and our stormwater bylaws, we have about five different bylaws that control how you construct in the flood plain. We don't need the Town of Situate flood plain bylaw anymore. It is antiquated, it's a piece of junk, and most people that work with it know that. So I would propose to get rid of the local bylaw and let FEMA control how this is happening, because that's what's going on anyways. All these elevated houses are not done because of our bylaw, they're being done for FEMA regulations, so that these people can reduce their insurances by going up. What they stated last night was the, on the flood insurance program, on a, on a federal level, all over the country, the biggest problem is not in this area. It's in areas around rivers in the middle of the country that flood, where people go back and rebuild the same house that they had before at the same elevation that they had, because they're getting very little money out of the program. But there's thousands and thousands of these houses. So when it comes to places like Situate, Marshfield, people are actually elevating their houses. Some of that has to do with Laura and with Nancy, getting these grants and getting people to allow, to be allowed to do this. So I think we're actually heading backwards if we change this to the new mapping system. And I'm certainly gonna be very, very vocal about doing that. And I don't have a house in the flood plain. But it's not right to deal with the people that do have houses in the flood plain and have some type of a broad sweeping, let's just take these properties and, and regulate them like that.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think anybody's talking about, you know, domain taking property.
No.
It's recognizing the reality of the physical situation and saying we should, we should plan around that, not around a map that, you know, doesn't represent the physical reality, right?
Our bylaw prevents...
It seems like we should, you know, recognize the physical reality of what's happening.
Our bylaw prevents new construction homes in the flood plain, in the Town of Situate flood plain. That's what it does, okay?
Okay.
If we increase the map, we're taking more property.
Okay.
That's the way it goes.
Yeah, but, but what you're saying is the map that doesn't reflect reality
Yep.
prevents construction.
That's right.
And you oppose a map that does reflect reality.
You're adding a tremendous amount of more property in.
I understand, I understand it's adding property in, but it doesn't mean, it's not reality that that property doesn't flood, right?
No.
So...
But you should be able to construct in a flood plain if it's done to FEMA standards. It's allowed all over the country. All over the country you can build in a flood plain. But in Situate, you can't build in a flood plain, in the Town of Situate flood plain.
Yeah.
I don't know why. Can, can somebody know why?
Back in the nineteen seventies, that was seen as the right thing.
In nineteen seventy-two, when they passed it, there was no provision that said you couldn't do, have new construction in the flood plain. That was something that was put in afterwards, that's what I was told, by Eleanor Foley, who no longer is here, but they stood at town meeting and said this would not take people's property, and then it was added in afterwards to prevent new construction in the flood plain. I'm not sure exactly what year it was, but...
We'll have to work on researching that sometime.
It would seem to me that, that, sort of, that particular discussion has to be around the, sort of, the facts of the situation in terms of what makes sense to build where, right?
That's what FEMA does.
And so does the town, right? The town, it has its own local control of, of development, and so the town has a say in that. And they should, right? Unless you wanna cede all of it to FEMA.
FEMA, FEMA is taking it all over, except Situate says you can't have new residential structures in the flood plain. Anywhere else in the country, I think there was one other town down the Cape that said you couldn't have new construction. I don't know if they still do that.
Oak Bluffs, they're actually stricter than, than Situate is, because they say that you can't do any additions. I mean, they're really a lot stricter. But one thing I wanted to mention is that to participate in the flood insurance program, FEMA makes towns adopt bylaws that have a lot of language about control of what's built and how it's built. They don't require that you prevent construction altogether.
Perfect.
But they do require that you have a bylaw and that it follows certain guidelines, and there are certain restrictions that they do put on you.
But they allow construction in the flood plain?
They do.
Well, in general, it's...
But that's not to say that Situate should. I mean, that's something that people in Situate have to decide.
Well, no, I think that's something like, like what Steve was saying, is that that needs to be looked at in our overall sort of master plan.
Yeah.
I mean, that's not, we're not gonna decide it tonight for any reason, but...
Right. And it's, you know, it's, it's not just a today issue, it's, it's...
A forever issue.
The next thirty, fifty years they're gonna bring, right? And, and how should the town, town be thinking about and planning for it? And a lot of infrastructure right there on the coast, you know? And we send a lot of people in, as Ann said, in harm's way, to rescue people on the coast.
Who refuse to leave when they know they should.
Right, so...
And those first responders have families.
But I think it's, I think it's appropriate to make it part of the conversation, right? Accounting, you got any accounting?
Move to approve invoice to, paid to Horsley Witten Group on July twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of seven thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars for peer review services.
That's for conservation as well, as, that's primarily for conservation, but just, just so you know.
Okay.
Yeah, because we haven't gotten all that out of them yet. Yeah.
Move to approve payment to Amory Engineers on the invoice from July nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of four hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-eight cents for construction inspections at Blanchard Farms.
That's an old one.
Move to approve payment to Merrill Corporation for the invoice on July nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of two thousand eight hundred dollars for site inspections and engineering review of drainage swale and grading to, grading verifications. And that's it.
Second of the motion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any minutes? Liaison reports?
Do you have to sign this?
Um, let's see. CPC has, has accepted some applications, trails, finally getting together in terms of parking, that type of thing for trails, signage, maps, et cetera. I guess I've been reappointed to South Shore Coalition, so...
You guess?
I, yeah, no, I have. They told me. They called me up and said, oh, by the way. So I'll have that to report. What else? CPC, EDC, we're trying to put, we're meeting again on the ninth, at a place to be determined, to talk about, you know, our next steps. We approved Stee, Ted Bowe, it's his scope of services. And so we're moving forward.
Great.
I have a quick, a quick question.
You also need to go down to Ann.
Is it three signatures that are needed?
Technically, I think you need to revote. If you don't, I think you voted Ann and Richard. It's only one signature.
So what?
I'm sorry, I'm confused.
I thought, I thought we did vote Ben, didn't we?
No.
No, not for, not for one, not for one signature.
Oh, okay.
So you need mine.
So if you want to redo that, you're gonna have to revote that issue.
See, I can come up here anytime and sign something.
As we can make the motion for next time.
Yeah, let's hold for next time.
Just a quick question, since Ann was talking about EDC. I saw there's the new, what would you call it, a harbor map, or a little pocket, Situate in your pocket? Is that EDC, or is that Chamber of Commerce?
Chamber of Commerce, and, but EDC did contribute to it.
All right. My only comment, I think it's a fantastic book, it's just that on the map, it doesn't show the T at all, it doesn't show the train stations. But it shows the new GATRA route.
Well, you need to talk to Linda Ferguson about that, because she's the one that's sort of doing it all. The, the map from, or the pocket guide from last year, if you look under Situate phone numbers, it's really pretty funny, because they have the town seal up in the corner. And it's the town seal from Situate, Rhode Island.
Really?
Yes.
Actually, Situate, Rhode Island was on the news last night, but anyway, there was a traffic.
But I do, I do wanna talk to them about that.
I just wanted to let everyone know that, well, maybe I don't need to get into all this, but I'm here twenty-five hours a week. I'm not working on any EDC anymore, because this is Trisha's mandate. And I've also given the dog park over to Sean McCarthy, which is good, because they have multiple grants. It's, it's pretty complicated, considering it's for dogs.
Yo, dogs.
And other than that, we have the sign for the library ordered. It should be going in, in the beginning of August.
How much did it cost?
Uh, it's just over a thousand dollars.
Isn't that fascinating? Isn't that just fascinating?
Let's not get into the discussion.
Sorry, I mentioned it.
Group to the school?
Yeah, but it's not shaped like a boat, it's just...
Yeah, with a mast, that you can hang yourself off of.
And, and that's about, we, we are continuing to work on... And, and that's about, we, we are continuing to work on the multifaceted issues of Blanchard Farm. They, the, the Cristoforos who live at number seven have gotten a proposal from a fence contractor. It's about a foot short of the width of the driveway, so I talked to Steve about it, and we decided that in order to kind of keep the oil on the waters and all of that, you guys should talk about it at a meeting. So, there's that part, and then the Cristoforos also wanna take some trees out of the non-disturb area, so I asked them to take pictures of the trees that they wanna take out, and then we'll look at it. They claim one of the trees is dead, we'll see. Um...
That'll be on the tab, right?
Yeah, yeah.
There's also some candidates for the new director of planning and get the title.
Planning and development.
Development, yeah.
Yeah, met with two of them today.
Yeah, I, I sent it out to everybody, if you had a chance to meet with them and stuff, that would be good, so. Hopefully, we'll continue along that process and, and get somebody, you know, awarded a position here, so. Anything else?
I just wanna make a quick comment. It's not really a liaison report, but I did drive by earlier today at Ford Place, and I can't remember the number for Ford Place, where we had some of the, thirteen, where we had some of the issues. And I, personally, I think it's coming out really nice. He's done a great job. The garage doors are now painted, cranberry red. There's the barn door on the Countryway side, the goose neck lighting. They took down the hatch that I sort of said didn't fit, the barn hatch. So, in, in general, I think that he's done a...
Good.
...a really nice job of respecting our comments and the design review, and that should be commended, and we should look for more of those, or look at, as an example of how he was very willing to listen to our comments and respond to that. So, hopefully, Union Place will be a similar situation.
Okay. I have one further question.
One further question?
What do we do with this?
Yes, we read it. I'm ready. I will entertain second.
I have a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Word adjourned.